I do want to just make a quick announcement as well. We do have a couple of notable birthdays this week in the Flint City Council, as well as a wedding anniversary. So happy birthday today to Councilwoman Priestley from the 4th Ward. And happy early birthday to Mr. Mays. Your birthday is on Friday, correct?
I abstain.
Okay. All right, well, happy birthday to the both of you.
Man, I'm down here for business. You don't get cool with me when it's birthday. It's business first for me.
Okay, yes, Ms. Priestley.
I ain't the funny acting toothpaste type of guy.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Priestley.
Did you know that now Mr. Mays on Friday can say he really is 64?
And then we also have a wedding anniversary. Congratulations, Dr. Lewis. How long have you been with your husband? If you want to share. Carry the one, 12 years. Well, congratulations. Congratulations, Flint City Council. We got some good things going on.
Next up, the speaker. Excuse me, Mr. Mitchell. There's no yelling out.
Because of the regulations. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. No, I'm gonna say it. Go ahead if you want to, but I'm gonna say this.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say this.
So, next public speaker, please.
I'm going to say this.
Mr. Metcalf, could you please...
Come on out, but I'm gonna say this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
When you use the word regulations, the people that need the help and the power are the ones who do not receive these. Thank you.
You have to give him a warning first. Should I give him a warning?
Point of order.
What is your point?
Yeah, that ain't how it work. You don't call the police to escort him out because he went over. You give a warning and it's a process. We can appeal your decision so forth and so on. So we need to move on and let that go.
You're not allowed to wrap up.
A point of order, Madam Chair.
What rules have been broken?
My point of order is that when that clock hit two minutes, if it's one to two to three seconds over and people talking and you interrupt it, whatever you decide to do, I'm gonna appeal it whether I win, lose, or draw. We need to move on. We all got sense of here.
Mr. Mays, that's an improper point of order. According to council rules, the council does not have to allow anyone to wrap up, including public, as well as council members. What is your point, Mr. Mays?
A point of order is a calling up a technicality and it's not a minor tech, it's a major tech. When you get with the public and want them throughout almost arrested and removed, that's major. It's a major breach. We don't have to scare the public. It's sick to police on the public in a civilized meeting. The years we've been saying wrap up. Wrap up when Pastor Trailhead went a few seconds over. He made it. People don't have to be scared to come up here and speak and be intimidated and harassed by a chairperson.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Madam Chair, Ms. Warden, when you are chairing, the whole vibe has just been completely up. Been absent for the last two.
Yes.
It is a nice consideration to just say, hey, please wrap up. I've seen you do that with people that you like. And I've seen how you do it with people you don't care for. But you should not be weaponizing the police against residents. You should not be weaponizing the police against the residents. They waited for you. You were almost 20 minutes late starting this meeting. People can't get that time back. You lost time. These people came. Let's be polite, let's be respectful to them. And don't root like a tyrant. Be fair to these people. They're being fair to you. No one came in here and yelled at you because you put Cyrus Park in to get 50,000 and didn't disclose it to anybody. You come this week to...
Point of order. That is not true.
Well, we didn't...
That's correct. And you should warn yourself.
Say what?
I will warn myself. I'll warn my... Mr. Mays.
Point of order.
What's your point?
That's your first warning. One more and then you just need to wrap up and sort it out in the meeting. So you warned yourself, we gonna keep track of that stuff.
So, thank you, Mr. Mays. You have a valid point. You are using a valid point of order. So definitely, I will warn myself.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Warden.
I really hope that this council remembers decorum and that we should stay germane to the subject at hand. I heard a lot of words like tyrant and dictator. I find that to be not good language in a professional meeting. I'm sure we can find other words to use to express displeasure. But labeling someone a dictator and a tyrant over enforcing a rule is extreme. And I am tired of extremism. It's extreme to take a ruling and then start screaming about it because you don't like it. It's in the rules.
Mr. Jones come up here. He may come to sit across the room for a long time. He knows the protocol of speaking before the voting. So he's not a new person coming before the vote.
Request, Mr. Mays.
What is your request?
But through you, Mr. Murphy to the speaker, you and Ms. Liddell Lewis both know he been the one getting them signatures on the recall. Could that be a factor?
Mr. Mays. Let's not... Real quick, Mr. Murphy. Let's not utilize the floor.
Point of order.
What is your point?
My request is to the speaker, not to you. That's the rule. And so you could get your second warning for answering my request for information to the speaker. You want to give yourself your second warning for intervening in that? Yeah, when you need to act...
Mr. Mays, you cannot use the floor for privileged motion. Outside of lifting a...
Point of order.
What is your point?
I didn't use it to take the floor. I asked a legitimate question to the speaker and you didn't jump in it and you out of order. I'm being nice 'cause if I appeal...
Question, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. And to answer your question to you, you also know that Mr. Jones is one of the ones that's living in one of the homes that you poured out of the 18 homes that have not paid taxes, not many years. So therefore, he's living in a house that you poured.
Request information.
So when you come...
Request information.
What is your request?
Mr. Murphy, do you know it take five council votes to pull a house? I could do it then by myself.
Proceed, Mr. Murphy.
That's a bad one.
What is your request?
Did you really want me to answer the question about your accusation of me pulling a house? Or did you really want me not to answer and let your comment that was false stand?
Proceed, Mr. Murphy.
You brought up the question about him during the recall. So I wanted to refresh your memory too to make sure you remember that he been living in the house that daddy paid taxes in because you poured one of them in that house out of the 18 houses.
Request information, and I'm gonna leave it alone. My request is we pulled 12 to 18 houses in a pilot project. So you mad 'cause he didn't wanna?
Mr. Mays. Mr. Mays, that is your warning. For violating Rule 26.2.
I'm gonna appeal the ruling of the chair.
That is fine.
Your job is to ask us...
Mr. Mays, you don't have the floor.
Point of order.
Mr. Mays, you don't have the floor.
Point of order.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Your job is to ask us there a second. Now that's the third violation. You should be out of this meeting.
Mr. Mays. Mr. Mays, you do not have the floor. You get my couple...
Point of order, it's the floor.
Your point of order.
Is that you failed to ask us there...
Mr. Mays, you do not have the floor.
On the one.
Mr. Mays, you do not have the floor. So, that says...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What is your point?
It shouldn't take all this rushing and howling for me to keep you in order.
Mr. Mays, what was...
Point of order. Let me make my point of order. If you gonna cause this much chaos and stay out of order, and I got to keep telling you, you should add your second warning and should be out of the door. So you was...
Point of order denied, Mr. Mays. We're trying to go on the meeting.
I appeal that ruling.
Just give the residents latitude. The residents are the reason that you sit in your seat. And we want them to engage in the process.
We are gonna waste an hour because of 12-second wrap-up. This is why there's YouTube or TikTok or whatever else is because of this right here. This is an hour and a half.
Thank you. So, anyone else who likes to speak, who would like to be here? Anyone else? So with that being said, how long is the last one to speak? Unfortunately, some people call the way that I chair a dictatorship. But what I do do, I enforce the rules that was voted on by this body. This body voted to have public speaking being at two minutes. And after the two minutes, no one is allowed, including council, the time to wrap up after their allotted time to speak. So, one time I did that, it was in the dome. People, they began to, Madam Chair, let me wrap up. I gave someone five seconds. That five seconds turned into 30 seconds. But still, it was under the guise of letting the person wrap up. I was in violation of council rules on that day. And so I said that I will not afford people the opportunity to wrap up. It is all of our duties to pay attention to our time. Unfortunately, Mr. Jones, he is a free quitter of our meetings. He knows the rules. Mr. Jones invited me to have the police come up here and escort him because he was gonna say what he wanted to say regardless. And so I could tell Metcalf to come and arrest him. We needed him removed from the lecture so we can have our next speaker. This is not a dictatorship.
If the rules say you can't take money, gifts, and rimes for people who you gotta vote 72 billion dollars for, that's what the charter say, that's the bigger rule. Then the majority who are sticklers for these rules and it relates to 12 seconds that Mr. Jones and warnings to me should vote. Should vote to suspend them for six months, 90 days. Remember, they're sticklers for the rules. And the rules has no apply to me, Rich Jones. They apply to Mr. Murphy and Liddell Lewis. They done took money, gifts, gratuities, and then recruited themselves from a vote for 72 billion dollars on the viewing project. It's called corruption. It could be turned over to the FBI to the Priestley, Eva Verdi, and the sticklers for the rules. I will watch Liddell Lewis and Quincy Murphy themselves. They call themselves throwing me out for 30 days for a rule violation. Now here we go. They done violated the rules. And the majority is voting publicly if it relates to that. The Lord moves in a right way.
Mr. Piper? Yeah, I don't know what this appeal is, but I want to think of the misinformation. We voted on three minutes. There's nothing about public speaking in two minutes in these rules.
No.
So we're putting that on the record. There's no two minutes for public speaking. We voted in three minutes. That's the only three minutes in this that we voted on. So we keep talking about voting for two minutes for public speaking. That is a false statement. It's supposed to be three minutes.
Request information. Request information.
What is your request?
Mr. Piper to the speaker, you tell it be honest to you about two minutes really shouldn't be three minutes anyway. Is that your point?
Madam Clerk?
But this came up before because this mistake was discovered before. And I think council voted to have the two minutes in its committees.
Okay, thank you. Proceed.
Request information. Do you, Madam Chair, to the speaker, do you understand that in the Open Meeting Act, they have to be able to speak at every meeting?
So, I know because you walked away and you just came back, you weren't clear that I was trying to get clarity on how much time they had. So I'm gonna give you some clarity since you walked away and just came back. I'm simply trying to find out. I'm simply trying to find out how much time.
So, what is your request?
Ms. Mesett, my request for information is what I heard the clerk tell you when I was here. They have to be able to speak at every meeting. That was my point. You can ignore it for...
Your request for information is not for me.
Mr. Mays, that was again an invalid request for information. So, we're gonna go ahead. Ms. Mesett, you proceed. Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Well, my colleague in the 1st Ward seems to always want to interrupt me when what I'm saying is not germane or not what he wants. So he can throw the rocks, but he can't catch them when his son get thrown back at you. He originally started off talking about a recall with Dr. Lewis that had nothing to do with the subject matter. But then when I came back on him and talked about the speaker and what he done for somebody personally behind closed doors and why they loyal to him, now he want to request for information. But it's okay for you to stop somebody and interrupt somebody when they saying stuff that you don't agree with. But when we talking, then as long as it's a lineup of what you doing, you can't have it both ways here. You can't throw no rocks at me and think that you gonna get thrown back at you and it can be okay. And that's your problem.
But this right here is, Mr. Mays, he's making allegations. He's making allegations that are untrue that make people our second. What's your point?
Madam Chair, when I'm talking about when you and Quincy Murphy took those are not allegations, those are admitted to facts that you admitted to in a public meeting. This is data fact, these are not allegations. These are facts that you and him admitted to, correct? Good.
Again, Mr. Mays, using privileged motion to take the floor. The point is, Mr. Mays said that our vote was bought and paid for. That is not true. And so you cannot speak on those terms according to Robert Roe. And so you were in violation. And so unfortunately, as the chair, my hard job is to make sure that you hold out things that are out of order to keep the meeting flowing smoothly. Unfortunately, now that you're back, we can't do this. Unfortunately, that's the case. Unfortunately, you have two colleagues that continue to second. And that's why we are an hour and a half and the council members standing in the back. Second warning.
Point of order. I told you I wanted you to be out of here before we vote on your removal.
That's your second warning. Go ahead.
Second warning for doing a point of order. Aren't you accusing three of us of being a certain way? Now you say the allegation on three of us. And I did a point of order and said, don't be accusing me and two more wrong. And you gonna give me a warning for that? Yeah, I give it.
So, you haven't issued your second warning, Mr. Mays? And you are open to speaking?
So, beg your pardon?
You haven't issued your second warning for violating rules.
And so you tried to have me removed from this meeting for taking up the three of us because you said and I wish we could run back the tape. Now I'm gonna appeal it. And then I'm gonna get the clerk to run back the tape because what you said about three of us to me was wild. And I will take up the feet, my son, my two colleagues. I ain't sure what you talking about. I'm not gonna give you the rule.
All right, so what is your appeal?
I'm gonna appeal to your second warning. I tried to throw me out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mays. So that is your second point.
And I just appealed.
And it is, and you have appealed. Is there a second?
Yes, I will support your appeal.
All right, second vice chair, what's your point?
Madam Chair, the fact is you did interrupt me without your second. I appeal whether what? Let me make it point you out of order and interrupted me. Now let me make my point and then you can rule. I mean, it's just ridiculous. You interrupted me with that and that's a fact.
So instead, we're sitting here fighting again. And it's time to move this meeting forward. It's time to get the business of the city done. And I am so frustrated tonight because it's been nothing but fights. And we haven't had that for a long. And this is crazy. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, what's your...
It wasn't a second. But anyway, whatever you and Priestley in that morning, I would drop my point.
No, no, no. The man was supposed to have pulled all back on us yet. So let's put him on the ground.
In case the judge see that because we're in a court of order, we be...
Ms. Piper, you're being pointed. Stop this, man. Ms. Piper.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Lord Jesus.
Uh, no, we weren't about to vote. Go ahead, Mr. Mays, what's your appeal?
Ms. Lewis, you can talk nasty to me and snap it all you want. It's not gonna deter me. You's a nasty, snappy talking person when it comes to me. You don't talk nasty.
What's your point?
Not germane and not professional.
Right, Mr. Mays, let's stay one time.
I appeal your ruling that you agreed with Ms. Warden and that I'm not germane. I had on this phone for a second trying to make my point. I'm gonna appeal that. I'm gonna appeal that stuff because I'm gonna break it up. I'm in there and she's smart. I appeal the ruling that you say, yeah, she's right. I didn't even make my point yet. So I appeal the ruling that you take it up for her like I'm right without trying to get me out of here. I'll feel. I was germane. See, I'm out of order. Because if you wanna talk across at me, I could got a lot I can say, so you don't wanna get...
Mr. Mays, please.
It's a misword.
Get it from Mays.
I appeal the ruling that the chair...
We understand.
...check up with talking across here.
So, is there a second for Mr. Mays' appeal for him not being germane?
Madam Chair, I support.
So what is your point?
Madam Chair, she is stating the making of his kind of significant remarks about the first. So you may not be on here from this end, but she is making remarks. I hope the first word is happy with him. And she is talking over here. So we need to be fair. We need to be fair to her.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Warden, I didn't hear anything. But if you are speaking without the floor like Mr. Mays has been doing all night, stop.
I ain't been doing that all night. If you want it, if you want it to rule and do that, I'll appeal that because I'm not gonna play the games with you. Y'all don't know her like I do. In between special affairs and city council meeting, the deputy chief of staff for Mayor Neely, Ed Taylor. She's standing at the double bed rail of being clear between getting on the elevator. Yes, she gives me the finger. Oh, no. That's how nasty she is. Now here in between me, if I give her the finger, a cuss out, you gonna hear about it. But not only has she gave a finger, she done told this babe stuff. She done talked about my mama. This is a nasty black lady. And she acted nasty.
What's your point? This is not appropriate language for a professional meeting.
This man have came back to city council and we can't get no business done. As long as he was gone, we was getting business done. And as long as he here, we gonna always keep on going down this road of these points of orders and points of request for information. And we ain't gonna get nothing done until we have the political will to override what he is trying to do. In my opinion, in this attempt to stall the meeting. Now, as much as we been coming to these city council meeting, we better have to get this stuff done. Now here we is in all of these appeals.
He's bad. And Council Murphy, sometimes I don't agree with her, Council Mays. I won't give him the opportunity. It's if you bugged in your eyes. You bugged in your eyes.
Spread right next to that movie spirit. And you take some girl tonight. I stopped doing this stuff next to y'all. He gonna be the perfect A and M and I and and quickly later. And you gonna say something to my point of order. It's your order and quickly later.
My exact view, Ms. Warden.
And Council Murphy, I am not going to take the opportunity to light you up. I'm not. You get into stuff that is just ridiculous. Ridiculous. So I hope we can move on. I mean, it's... Wherever we are at at this point, we need to broken on the agenda. Unless, you know, we don't like each other, make it outside.
Protect him. That Ms. Warden over there shitting and talking like she at Hammond and teaching some kids. And the kids coming up to me telling me...
What is your point? Germane, he's not germane.
Yeah, if Mr. Mays, her place of employment had nothing to do with this.
Oh, yes it does.
Please stay germane.
I'm germane with her talking and doing. And she would teach at Hammond and the kids coming up to me.
Mr. Mays, again, you have been warned. Please, stay germane.
I am germane. Kids coming up to me 12 years old.
What's your point?
Still lying. Please, remain with Germane.
Mr. Mays.
Ms. Lewis, you done warned me publicly with repeated point of order. Kids coming up...
Ms. Warden, what's your point?
I don't know how many times he's already even say this because he's not saying germane.
So, Mr. Mays, you've been warned twice. Let's not bring up her point. So that will be your point.
Yes, I'm gonna appeal that. And I'm talking about kids talking about other men, kids talking about you. So I appeal that you wanted me because I'm talking about Ms. Warden's behavior related to yours. And I'm gonna appeal.
So, there is a appeal on the floor for Mr. Mays' warning for not being germane and bringing up his work, his workplace continuously. Is there support?
I appeal that sir's warning.
Okay, this is great entertainment for your TikTok fans. But it is just absolutely painful for those of us that want to see ARPA funds being passed, people who want to do the work for this city. They've sat here for more than four hours listening to this crap. It's ridiculous.
All right, so...
This way, he got a tag.
Wow. Get that up. Get me a house. I believe that Mr. Three...
Trying to throw me out. Trying to throw me out of my residence. And it ain't checkers. Check. It's checks. It ain't checkers. It ain't checkers.